I'd like to open the City of Littleton City Council Studies Session. It's a hybrid meeting for Tuesday, April 13, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. We have most of council here. We are missing council member -- oh, the council member Fay is virtual. We are missing council member Elrod. I don't see her virtual. So it's all but one member. All right. So council, we have three items on our agenda tonight. First one is ID number 21-069, Proposed Council Goal Five, Arts and Cultural Commission. I'm hearing feedback. All right. So council, what we're going to do is we're going to review the Littleton Arts and Cultural Commission's strategic plan and continue our discussion of council goals setting for 2021 and 2022. And council, what we will be doing, we'll be discussing at least six items to be considered for the 2021 and 2022 proposed budget. Council will direct staff to include or not include these items in the proposed budget. Staff has provided estimates, as you read. Those were just estimates, so they could be correct or they could be way off. So that was, it was just to give us an idea of what they could be. For the record, council member Elrod has joined us, so we are a full council tonight.
Hello, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll turn it over to city manager.
Good evening, council. We're getting a little echo here, Tyler.
Yeah, we are.
Can we correct that? All right, we'll let Tyler whittle away at that problem. So again, good evening, council. So we do have a presentation here by one of our boards and commissions. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Nardi. She is our Cultural Services and Communications Director. She'll make some introductions. And again, we're going to be talking about a potential goal here for city council around culture and arts and culture and tourism. So with that, Kelly, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, council. Nice to be with you tonight in person in the room. This is wonderful. I'm Kelly Nardi. I'm the Director of Cultural and Media Services for the city. Tonight, we have the chair and the co-chair of the Arts and Cultural Commission. Easy for me to say. Our chair is Mike Broughton. Our vice chair is Kate Eckle. And we have commission member Ranky over on the front row of the audience. The commission has worked really hard over the last year and faced a significant disruption because of COVID, but they got their strategic plan finished, and it was adopted unanimously by the commission in February. And so I would like to turn it over at this point to Mike and to Kate to talk to you about their strategic plan. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council. Mike Broughton, I'm the Deputy Executive Director for South Suburban Parks and Recreation, and on the commission, I represent South Suburban Hudson Gardens and also serve as the chairperson. This evening, as Kelly mentioned, we're joined by Kate Eckle, who's our vice chair. We also have Greg Ranky in the audience, as she mentioned. We'd also like to thank Kelly, Tim, and his staff as well for the, as well as the city's consultant, Fabi Hilliard, for their help and guidance in the Arts and Cultural Commission. I do understand that you have a substantial discussion this evening, and so our presentation will be relatively brief. I'll cover some components and then turn it over to Kate, and we'll jump back and forth. We, I should also note, too, we started this discussion as LAC, the Littleton Arts and Cultural Commission. We have since kind of transitioned to the Arts and Cultural Commission, or ACC, or You'll hear me reference ACC this evening. I'm not talking about our Apple Community College. I'm talking about the Arts and Cultural Commission. Just a quick paraphrased review of our 2020 commission activities. Kelly mentioned that we were disrupted by COVID, very disrupted by COVID. We had our first meeting in February of 2020. It was an introductory meeting, getting to all the other commission members, reviewing actions on how the commission was established, review of staff-generated bylaws and charter, also a brainstorming discussion about arts and culture in the surrounding, in Littleton and the surrounding area. We were also fortunate enough to meet on March 12, 2020, where we elected officers, starting the discussion of possible activities, including inventorying arts and culture organizations within Littleton and the area, and then the pandemic and the shutdowns. So it was unfortunate timing. Everyone's focus shifted to dealing with the pandemic, and we didn't meet for a few months then. It was, we skipped April and May, met again virtually for the remainder of the meetings in 2020, canceling only October. In the virtual meetings, we managed to identify and discuss some important areas of, for the areas of focus for the commission, and working with staff and city management identified the need to develop a strategic plan. And that strategic plan is in your packet this evening. It was built upon the HART section of the city's comp plan in an effort to better focus the commission's efforts and align those efforts with the comp plan. The commission's discussions over many meetings provided the staff and consultant kind of the basis or background for the development of a, of a draft strategic plan that the commission would ultimately take on and refine. The, and in doing that, it took us two or, two or so meetings to get there, but ultimately, as Kelly mentioned, the strategic plan was adopted in February of 2021. So the strategic plan, I'll cover now. Strategic plan is included in your packet. Commission based its strategic plan on the goals from the Heritage Arts Recreation and Tourism, or HART, section of your comp plan. I'm not going to go back over those goals for you, but we'll review the specific six goals identified in the ACC's strategic plan. Before I do that, though, I do want to address one item that I understand has been raised by individuals before the council, the idea that Littleton's history is not being considered or addressed by the commission. Heritage, history, and historic preservation may not be expressly in the commission's name, but I want to ensure you the commission members appointed by the city council are keenly aware of Littleton's history. When I worked for the city, I always liked to explain to folks that Littleton was a city and a community well before it was a suburb of Denver, and that history needs to be honored and respected. So the commission has and will continue to continue, or excuse me, continue to consider Littleton's history, heritage, and historic preservation in its decisions. We also have a tourism charge as well, but that's not in the name either. To me, those subject areas are included in the cultural component of the commission's charge, and I just wanted to be ensure, or to ensure council that the ACC has a more holistic focus than the name might imply. So with that, onto our commission goals. We have six. So I'll list these goals and then turn it over to Kate, and she'll cover kind of those action plan. So first goal, integrate arts and culture, and these are fairly lofty goals, and we, this is a five-year plan, so take that into consideration as we go through this. Integrate arts and culture into the social economic fabric of Littleton, making certain to respond to goals of producing a positive impact, defining a sense of place, and improving quality of life. Second goal, provide support for local arts organizations. Third, support creative individuals and advance arts leadership. Fourth, identify and recommend policies and funding sources to support arts and culture community efforts, organizations, and programs. Fifth, enhance collaboration, communication, partnerships with many agencies, organizations, and nonprofits that advocate for heritage, arts, and culture. And the last goal, create an organizational structure for the ACC to be effective, efficient, clearly define how community members can be engaged with the commission. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate, and she can cover the, kind of those objectives and work plan items.
Good evening, city council. My name is Kate Eckle. Thank you, Mike, and special thanks to the staff of the Littleton Museum, Tim Nims, Becky Cosma, Jenny Hankinson, Maury Casey, and Director of Cultural and Media Services, Kelly Nardi, and our council liaison, Karina Elrod. They have been tireless in their support of this commission. As Mike referenced, we've been busy putting together objectives under our strategic plan. These objectives are what we are using to guide our efforts as a commission. Under each goal are specific objectives and work plans. These objectives and work plans will be accomplished over the next five years, from 2021 through 2025. I will review each objective, giving clarity to those that have been discussed by the commission. These objectives and work plans are a work in progress, and we anticipate some changes over the next five years. So I'll go ahead and just start with the objectives under the ACC Goal One. And the first objective is to foster a community where residents have an opportunity to engage with the arts and where creativity thrives and is valued. We're going to do this by encouraging culturally diverse programming, encouraging community engagement, encourage common scheduling information, support festivals and outside family events, and encourage diverse cultural programming. Objective two, understand the current assets and resources allocated to arts and tourism programs already within the city. Review city inventory of community assets, analyze current city investment, and then we have a long list of what has already been invested under objective number two. Objective number three, create cultural arts programming partners group to meet quarterly. We're going to do that by expanding marketing opportunities for cultural activities to visit Littleton website and other media, and to work with the Cultural and Media Services Department to engage community newspapers, magazines, blogs, and include regular arts coverage. Alert media to cultural activities and engage them in creative ways to inform the public. Collaborate with the marketing partners group on marketing workshops and training to nonprofit arts groups on free and low-cost marketing and promotion techniques and the use of the website. Promote best practices for collaborative marketing, list sharing, cross-promotion with nonprofits, agencies, and creative industries. Consider an integrated local virtual gallery with a guide and shopping capability on website and social media. Objective four, minimize barrier costs to cultural access for all residents. Propose programs that encourage participation at a discounted price, for example, a passport to the arts with diverse discounted opportunities among multiple organizations to increase access to children, seniors, and the disadvantaged. Objective five, along with tourism efforts, propose organizations track public participation in cultural programs. Create opportunities for name and email gathering at public events and festivals, and encourage organizations that have memberships to track activity. I'm going to continue on with objectives. You guys have work plans that are underneath these, and I certainly, and Mike also, are open to discuss those work plans as we go further. It's kind of a big document, so I kind of want to move things along for you guys, but please, at any time, ask us questions as we get into it. So, was that the goal two? I think I covered that, too. So goal three, support creative individuals and advance arts leadership. Recognize and support creative individuals that are already here in the community, and I really want to hit the goals one and two. All of this stuff is already here, and so the purpose, a large part of the purpose of the commission is to bring what's already here together. Proposed work plan, we have it there. Objective two, serve as a public forum for community engagement on arts and culture issues. Facilitate annual roundtables of arts and culture clubs and other groups and organizations to encourage networking, sharing of ideas, and resources. Goal four, research successful strategies from other communities for consideration by city council. These may include public art, sales tax initiatives, and financial policies that allow funding to accumulate over time. Objective two, develop a database of arts and culture supportive as advocates for possible future voter-approved lodging tax, a portion of which would be directed to arts and culture programs. And then the work plan follows. Goal five, so this is a list of all the partnerships that we have identified already within the city of Littleton. So again, it's about bringing what's already here together and enhancing that collaboration and communication. And the proposed work plan follows that. And then six, the proposed work plan under there is develop subcommittee structure for ANCC, policy development, program planning, recruitment, retention of commission members, Littleton Museum, Bemis Public Library, and the strategic plan review. We've already started on the first two, which is policy development and program planning. I'm going to turn it back over to Mike to talk about the policy development, and I will be addressing program planning.
Sure, thank you. So with the, immediately, we found that as we got into actual discussions on what we wanted to do, we had to split the committee to actually get some work done. And so what I did is I took the policy side, Kate took the programming side. With the policy side comes the tax components. So the, for instance, the percent for public art, not necessarily a tax, but a fee on those capital projects or development projects that will define percentage that will be directed to public art or consideration for public art. The other item, and that's the, the most immediate focus is that percent for public art. The goal is to have that wrapped up, you know, hopefully, early fall for consideration by council. Other items that are on there for consideration would be lodging tax, should that, should council decide to ever move forward with lodging tax, the, or some other kind of, I know we've discussed a ticket fee as well for seated venues in Littleton. So that'd be some of those items that we'd be discussing at policy committee. So the structure of our meetings is that we meet as a group to review kind of activities that have either occurred in the subcommittees or to receive input from staff on various items, and then we break after that into our subcommittees, and we go and discuss each of these issues. So that's primarily policy for now. We just started, we've had one meeting, and we're kind of putting some, some structure around what ultimately will be this percent for public art component. And then Kate, so basically, our policy committee is one of these goals, and Kate has the rest of it. So I'll turn it over to Kate, and she can talk about all the programming.
So the programming committee has had two meetings.
Hello, Kate. We just had a question for you. Would you mind taking a question?
Actually, it's for Mike.
Sure.
It's a 1% public art ordinance, 1% of what?
So the percentage actually isn't set yet. That was one of the things that we had discussed as a committee early on is, most communities do do a 1% for public art, and that 1% is generally capital improvements, so any kind of capital project that is put forward by the city, or any kind of private development. You can impose some type of additional fee on them or requirement that they either do fee in lieu of, or you can require that they put public art in their development, and that's for your attorney probably to explain a little more.
Great, thank you, Mike. And then just for council member Fay, if you would, to use your icon so I can see your hand, and that way I know you have a question. Thank you. Go ahead. Appreciate it.
So the programming subcommittee has had two meetings so far, and I would like to mention the last meeting was really productive. So during our most recent meeting last Thursday, the programming committee established the following. Look, the goal is fostering connections of arts and culture organizations and events in our community, and then we're moving forward with establishing benchmarks for our success. So how are we going to measure success within the community, and then, of course, to submit to city council. Define culture in our community, so the cultural demographics of Littleton, and to integrate and define key components of the history of Littleton and its impact on our culture. So really using history to define what our culture is. The plan to develop a 24, 36, and 60-month calendar of events of every current Littleton arts and culture entity that's currently in place. So bring together that calendar, and then we'll be able to tie in, you know, if there's going to be a dance recital, then maybe we can tie in the Philharmonic, and so that it's layered over the course of 24, 36, and 60 months. Look at ways that the commission can assist in promoting and tying together events, which I've addressed. Any event sponsored by the commission will be evaluated through the lens of the strategic goals and objectives of the commission. We have no shortage of great ideas of things to do, especially when it comes to events. But as some of the discussion over time, events are like the tip of an iceberg, and you have the foundation that is underneath, and the commission is really serving as that foundation to help define what we're going to do as far as a cultural community and an arts community. All current arts and culture organizations will be placed on the ANCC city website, and we're hoping to have that done by the next meeting, and then work with media services to look at a communication plan for the commission, including the website, logo, branding, and messaging, and we're hoping to have that rolled out in three to four months. So those are what we have on our plan right now, and of course, utilizing the museum, the city, the library, things that are already in place. Questions?
All right, council, who wants to start out with more questions? I don't see a lot of questions at the moment. I do have one question, though. So should we end up with a downtown business district, who would have the authority to deny or approve things that this commission would want to bring in?
Mayor, I think that would be a question that would have to be kind of looked at through the development of, you know, one of the solutions, the formal solutions, whether it's a downtown development authority, a bid, or something else. All depends on what their charge would be. And so that's another reason why the city needs to be kind of part of that conversation so we can kind of see those kinds of opportunities or even potential conflicts, so we can help kind of address early on.
Okay, great. Council member Fay.
I have this question, city attorney. We heard the two speakers saying that they were planning--
Carol, if you could lean forward into your, thank you, thank you.
We heard one speaker saying that there would be a lodging tax that was going to arts and culture, and another speaker said there would be a 1% fee for the arts. Attorney, can you explain to me when council decided on that tax and what that tax would be going to, and also the 1% fee? That's all.
I don't believe that council has, to this point, decided on a lodging tax, one, or two, where monies would go that were generated for some, from said lodging tax. As Mr. Broughton did allude to, a lot of other cities do have kind of an art in, in public places policy, which generally, kind of by and large in the Denver metro area, is a 1% kind of tax or fee that's assessed against public improvement projects that goes to a fund. In order to establish such a fund, our city council would have to legislatively create that fund and then dictate where that goes. Obviously, for art in public places, the thought is, is that it's kind of a fee in lieu unless a developer who's coming in and doing any sort of development places their own public art within that project. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but both of those are just proposals that would ultimately need to come back before this council, for this council to make a decision on that.
Carol, you're muted there, Carol.
I'm not. So the speaker's assumption that that money would be available is not the case yet. Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, Kate, thanks so much. It's nice to see you in person. Appreciate your presentation. If I'm remembering right, I think one of the motives for the Arts and Culture Commission was to create a symbiosis between business and arts in the city, and that nexus isn't jumping off the page for me as I look through the strategic plan. Can you sort of highlight what that conversation has been like on the commission, how arts are going to support business, how business is going to support the arts? And then just another question is, I didn't see the school district on the list of partnerships. Was LPS considered as a partner? And if so, can they be added? If not, why not? Thanks.
The last question first. Of course, LPS is a partner. It was obviously in omission if they weren't included in that list. For the, the discussion on business and art, it is included in there. It's been a difficult year to plan and a difficult year to have discussions on some of these items. The strategic plan does include some focus on that, and maybe Kate can, can touch on that a little bit if you can find something there to cover, but the, we've had one meeting face to face in over, over the last year. So the goal is that we now look to kind of what we put on paper and hash that out a little bit more. So we'll get there, but it, I agree with you, it may not be jumping off the page right now.
Thank you. Council member Millman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate.
I was actually going to respond. So if I could go ahead and turn your attention to page 18 in the packet under ANCC Goal Five, and there it talks about enhancing collaboration, communication, partnerships with agencies, organizations. I think we have approximately 25 businesses that are actually listed on here. In addition to that, we have business owners that are actually sitting on the commission, Mr. Ranky for one, and he has offered his expertise as far as some of the community business organizations that are already in place and how we're going to go ahead and start to integrate them. So we've identified current businesses that are in place, as well as working with our business community.
Great, thank you. Now, council member Millman, then, Elrod.
Hi. So good to see you all in person. Thank you for coming. This is a great presentation, incredibly thorough and very interesting. I did have a question about goal number five. Well, actually, it was back a couple of goals, maybe it's the first one. Encouraging diverse cultural programming. As you know, with, in the comp plan, one of the values of this community is to be more inclusive. How, how do you envision, I know Nancy and I have talked a little bit about this, but how do you envision pulling in those smaller communities or smaller groups within our community to make them feel more included, if you will? to make them feel more included, if you will? Like, I'm thinking, I see your list of organizations on. It's fantastic that there's so many different groups and organizations that are involved. Maybe some of the nonprofits like Graceful Cafe or Break Bread or North Littleton Promise. I don't know if they're included in identified community stakeholders, but I particularly am very interested in- You don't have to go into detail tonight, but- And perhaps you already have a plan, but I just think it would be so great and so wonderful for our community to pull in as many different groups within our community, so.
So I can go ahead and address, actually, one of the leaders on this list, one of our performing arts, has already reached out to one of the community services that you've listed. They're already working in partnership as far as performing arts. And in addition to that, what we'd really like to do is continue to identify those demographics throughout the city and continue to promote their events. So in communication and conversation with them, events that they already have in place, really working with media to go ahead and expand that so other people in the community know that that's going on and are able to attend. And that's really the cross-cultural aspect of it that we're looking at in the beginning stages of.
And I'll add as well. What we've identified so far, that's just the beginning of the list. As we move forward and we start to do some more planning, some more events, some more promotion in general of arts and culture in the city, we'll be looking for those partners. And we do have a fantastic group of folks that represent across the community. We'll also lean on staff to ensure that we are being inclusive with all the smaller populations within the city.
This is good stuff, thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Elrod, and then Fay.
Thank you. So thank you both for presenting tonight and Greg for being here. And there may be other members on the phone that this commission has worked really hard, done really great work here, as you can see. So thank you to all of you for your time and passion to this. This is definitely one of those commissions that is rolling up their sleeves, putting on their gloves and no. But they are having a healthy debate on these things. You know, a couple of things that I really appreciate about this strategic plan and how we're working here. You clearly saw that this went, you know, we're taking action. This is not a plan that is sitting on a shelf. Actually, this is already, you know, as soon as it made it on paper, they already took action. So this is something that is an active, productive commission and strategic plan that is guiding us and in response to our comprehensive plan. And really, again, even to our comprehensive plan, it's allowing us to take action on that comprehensive plan. So thank you for that. The other item that I really like about how we're working here is we're putting measurement criteria. We're defining what success looks like. And we're defining where, how we can measure it. And where we can't measure it, then we will look to how do we establish a baseline so that we can measure in the future. So it really becomes, you know, why we're doing it, what the outcomes are. We have to call to Protem Malin's question on businesses. One of the success measures is economic development, sense of place, and quality of life. So we will hold ourselves, and the commission will hold us all accountable, including themselves, to making sure that that lens that we look through to define what arts and culture is for the city of Littleton also fulfills those outcomes that are the purpose and intent of why we're doing this. So thank you. Thank you to everyone for your thoughts, ideas, your thinking, and your hard work.
Great, thank you. All right. Counsel, any other questions? Counselmember Fay lowered her hands. All right. Well, counsel, as I mentioned at the beginning here, what we're going to do to direction, give to, direction to staff is whether or not we want to continue staff to move forward with this and include it in the proposed budget that they are probably already working on, or city budget, that is.
If I may, Mayor. Excuse me. So we'll make a transition here. So again, appreciate the hard work of our commission here. I think it's a great introduction here to kind of the next question that I'd be asking counsel is, how do we support the commission here and our work here for arts and culture here over the next two years? So remember, we have a series of goals. And we're trying to plan for at least a kind of a two-year horizon here. So staff has worked here with the commission here to draft a goal, objective, and action steps here specifically for city council for your consideration. And so we're going to step into that. Also included in the communication is kind of a list of the kinds of things financially that the council could consider. We're not asking the council this evening to make any kind of decisions specifically on those. That'll be played out during the budget process here this fall. The intent here is to highlight the things that could be considered. And so if you do have a response to some of that, sure, well, that's certainly welcome. But the intent is to try to show that we're going to create a goal, objectives, and then tie it financially to the budget eventually here this fall. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly. Okay, Kelly and Sam, I think, are tag teaming this perhaps.
We are tag teaming. And counsel, I failed to introduce Tim Nims, who I know you all know, and Nancy Trim, our museum and our library director. Tim has been the primary staff liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission. So I just want to make sure you were aware how hard he and his staff have worked to get us to this point. So tonight, the staff is asking for your support of making arts, culture, and tourism Goal 5 for your work plan. Sam is running the PowerPoint. As you can see, this ties very directly to the comprehensive plan, Heritage Arts Recreation and Tourism, Number 5. So I'm going to go quickly over the objectives. The Arts and Culture Commission Strategic Plan is a huge part of Goal 5, but there are some other components that I just want to mention to you. As Mayor Protem Malin asked about supporting businesses, I was jumping at the chance to talk about this slide, but now we're here. You know, regional tourism is very important. As you may recall, also interrupted by the pandemic, the staff worked with consultants and created the Visit Littleton brand. We have not yet deployed this brand. This is what we consider to be Phase 1. There was a huge engagement process that went on in the creation of this brand. And I think we presented this to you back in August, I believe. Phase 2 is developing the Visit Littleton website. This will be a very robust destination marketing tourism-based website. I use the example, if you want to go to Jamaica, you don't go to the country of Jamaica's website to plan a trip. You go to the visit site to plan your trip to Jamaica. And the same is true for a Visit Littleton website. You know, we have a huge opportunity to create, increase sales tax revenue here with the many amenities Littleton has that no other community has. What we have is very unique. And, you know, especially when Hudson Gardens gets back in business with their concert series, I think we have a big opportunity. So that's one of our action steps to get that Visit Littleton website built this year. And then continuing our partnership with the Town Hall Art Center. And I'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later on. Our measures are, we'd like to increase non-resident attendance at our events by possibly 10% each year. We have the ability to measure the number of people with cell phones who come into a certain area during an event, such as the Criterium. And we can also look at the zip codes associated with those cell phones. I know it's a little Big Brother creepy, but everybody's doing it, so we should probably do it too. We also want to be sure that we maintain our quality of life rating. In the resident surveys, since we've been doing it in 2012, residents rate the quality of life in Littleton anywhere from 92% to 95%. And we want to keep our quality of life rating above 90% moving forward. Objective 2. The strategic plan is just a huge part of that. The action steps are implementing that strategic plan. As Mike mentioned earlier, we are still working with Fabby Hilliard, who has been, you know, a great asset for us to keep us moving forward. And she's got such a great background in the arts and culture community. We'll also be looking at priority-based budgeting and how cultural arts programming fits in with PBB. The measures, the resident and business surveys for the library and museum, which are the two largest cultural institutions within the city. Let me get that. The services at Bemis Library, every service that's rated in the resident survey rates between 85% and 93% in quality of the service. And the museum, almost the same numbers. All aspects of museum services are rated between 86% and 96%. So we want to maintain those higher-quality ratings for our two biggest cultural institutions in the city. Objective 3, again, is about partnerships. I think, you know, Mike and Kate talked pretty well about grants and the Cultural Arts Partners Program that we want to implement. In addition to that list that you see in the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, the museum staff maintain a list of, I believe, 60 or so different smaller arts and cultural groups within Littleton. And so our goal is to bring all of those folks together on a quarterly basis in a fashion similar to our marketing partners program that was so successful prior to COVID. We hope to get that back off the ground again here sometime really soon. And then also in the resident business surveys, every year that we've done it, the quality of life rating, 90% or greater. We want to keep it that way. And Objective 4 is that partnership, again, implementation of the strategic plan. Mike mentioned researching those funding options. You know, I think the city attorney explained, maybe in response to councilmember Fay's question, that none of this is a done deal. The committee is doing research. And so they're going to do research on best practices for a percent for public art proposal and bring that to you. It's actually a very common fee that is implemented on those who do large construction projects in the city. I think Littleton Village is a good example of the art that the developer put in, that very large sculpture up there. So we just want to make sure that these large developments have some element of public art in them, whether the developer does that on their own or does the fee in lieu. And then the commission assists in determining what kind of art might go in that place. So the commission will present that proposal to you sometime this fall. The museum admission fee is something I think that we've talked with you briefly about. That's something that we plan to present to you as a policy question in the 2022 budget. And not to get anyone alarmed, our proposal will continue to make admission to the museum free for Littleton residents. It would only impose a fee on out-of-the-city visitors to the museum. And we think that's a very reasonable request, but we'll talk about that this summer during the budget. So Mark asked us to put together some of the resources we may need to implement some of these objectives. Visit Littleton Phase 2, that website development is in the ballpark of around $46,000. We hope to get that done this year. I don't know if you all have seen or received the presentation that Town Hall Art Center did about their 2025 plan. They created their 2025 plan in 2017. As you know, the city owns that building. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. I would tell you, in my long tenure here, when I first came to work for the city, Town Hall was struggling mightily. So much so that it was very close to terminating all the staff and closing the doors. I think we've been really lucky over time that the Town Hall Art Center Board of Directors has been a wonderful tenant for an asset that we own. The city at that time, I bet it was 25 years ago, had to provide funding to Town Hall to keep the doors open. And so we certainly don't want to get into that kind of situation. The building's never been renovated since it was initially the Town Hall. And from the time it became a performing arts center, it's never been renovated. It's in dire need of renovation. Town Hall Art Center's 2025 plan has four phases. I'm really pleased to tell you, Phase 1, they needed additional rehearsal space so that they could have more performances in the building and thereby bring in more revenue. I believe they have an arrangement with Aspen Grove right now. And Aspen Grove is giving them a very large space at no cost that they're going to be able to use for the long term, I believe, to turn that into rehearsal space. So that's really going to free up the evenings for them to have performances there. In their surveys, they have found that 53% of people who attend a Town Hall Art Center performance also have dinner in downtown Littleton either before or after the show. So that's a really important economic driver. Their estimate, and it's rough, it's as rough as it could be. They don't have architecture or construction drawings. But their estimate is that it'll be about $5 million to do the renovation. They believe they have a patron who can provide them with half that funding. So at some point in time, they'll be looking to the city council as to whether you'll be willing to provide the other half of that funding. And again, that's something that maybe you consider with a lodging tax at some point down the road. You know, we're not proposing that for now or next year. It's just something to get on your radar and have you think about over the next few years. The cultural arts partners that we talked about, where we would get all of these 60-plus arts groups together to network, to socialize, to share common interest and partner with one another. We're asking for $10,000 to help facilitate that. Tim and I met yesterday with a downtown Littleton business who has a really cool wall and wants to do a really cool mural on it. And we're seeing more murals come up in the downtown area. And we've talked to people who own properties, who are willing to have a mural, but might need some help with the cost of that. So we're asking in the 2022 budget, that'll be a budget or a policy question as well, $20,000 to help facilitate more murals in the downtown and market a mural walk for downtown. We'd like to have a really iconic mural, you know, like the postcards you've seen in other communities, but maybe something really cool that says Littleton. And then everybody goes there and takes selfies and it's viral and it would be really cool. And then I think we all mentioned our consultant Fabby previously. You know, I think you can see this is an ambitious plan. The museum staff are contributing a lot of staff resources as well as my time as well. But we can't do all this alone. We are going to need to have the services of Fabby as our consultant into 2022. So that will come to you in the budget as a request as well. It is hoped that at some point in time, when we're able to establish a steady source of revenue, whether it be from a percent for public art, or a lodging tax, or a seat tax, or whatever it might be, that we would be able to have someone help administer the work of the Arts and Culture Commission. So those are the anticipated resource needs. Here's our next steps. I'm sad to tell you that today we decided that we are not going to have the Art and Wine Event on June 19th at Aspen Grove. I think it's just too soon coming out of the Corona era. It's the COVID era. It's been really hard to find artists who were ready to put on an art show. And we're also having a tough time getting wineries who are ready to come out and have a wine event in June. So we're going to take a look at maybe trying to do that this fall, maybe when things are a little more back to normal. I mentioned the downtown mural walk, the public art research that the commission will be doing. I think I mentioned all of these things. Evaluating the museum and library staffing for the 2022 budget. We're going to talk about a temporary solution for that is our next item on the agenda. But potentially, there'll be a policy question for you in the 2022 budget about museum and library staffing, particularly as both of those departments are undergoing a strategic planning process at this time. So we'll have more information about that for you this summer. And then just continuing our partnership with Town Hall and monitoring their progress with the 2025 plan. with the 2025 plan. And that, I believe, is all I have, and I'll turn it over to Samma.
Good evening, Council. Samma Fox, Assistant to the City Manager. As we know, this year is a bit of a unique year with how we structured our work plans. We're doing a series of goal-setting meetings, and we've committed to talk at each one of these meetings a little bit about where the whole work plan is. Tonight, we anticipated to show you a dashboard preview. City Manager Mark Ralph, do we still have capacity for that?
Sure, let's go ahead and do that. I was considering doing that during City Manager comments, but I think we're on a roll here, so let's tie it all together.
Okay, please bear with me while I switch my screen share. Okay, we should have this draft work plan coming up. As you are all aware, we have been trying to manage our work plans via a system called Smart Sheets that allows us to make public-facing dashboards. So this year, this is what we have proposed for our new work plan, and I'm just going to give you some high-level details of this. This is still draft. We have a set of resources available in this corner, so people can find our calendar, find how to engage, where to connect for meetings. I need remedial microphone lessons, apologies. We have a welcome, which should help people navigate where we are, with which goals that have been adopted, and which goals that are still under consideration. We propose giving a summary of the goals and just showing progress by objective levels. So you can see here, all of our objectives for the ULUC, for example, are in progress. We still have at least one objective under arts, culture, and tourism that we have not yet started. And this is a two-year work plan, so we do anticipate to see objectives at different phases throughout. This will help us see progress. This year, we're also introducing metrics. So those are what Kelly went over here for our measures of how we're showing success. So we would like to show our metrics here as a summary for things that maybe have not yet been measured. We haven't done that next resident business survey, so we're going to have a few metrics we don't know until then. And then things that might be underperforming our meeting expectations and exceeding expectations, and we expect there to be variety here as well, and this is something we can provide updates on as we go through. Then, as we've had in the past, we would have a scrolling list for upcoming meetings. This is a draft dashboard, so there might be inappropriate or incorrect, rather, information on here, so please forgive any incorrect dates listed. And then we will have a Gantt chart that shows all of our timing for each of the goals and objectives here, so you can see where we are, what's coming up next, what the phasing looks like. So this is our proposed dashboard for this year, trying to keep it simple and all together.
We'll have more detail, Council, here on implementing all this, but I'm a firm believer in what gets measured gets done. We use this system here internally to take a deeper dive with staff so that we understand kind of the point in time where things are moving. And then I firmly believe that this is important to share with our community, so there is an outward-facing piece to this thing. So if somebody has interest in whatever the goal is that council adopts, they can take a quick look and see where things are at. So we've done this before. Again, COVID kind of reset the button here a little bit, but this is the intent we wanted to share. Good.
Okay, let me bring us back to our presentation. And then we also wanted to share what's coming up, so we've got a number of goal-setting meetings upcoming. We are discussing Goal Four Downtown on May 11, July 13, and August 24. These are paired with ULUC discussions. We are discussing our Goal Eight, Good Governance, on May 25th. Goal Six, Housing and Livability, on June 8th, and Environmental Stewardship on September 14th. So with that, that was our presentation for this evening. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Samma. All right. Council, I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with one for Kate. How you doing, Kate? All right. Has, what do you call it, lack? What do you call it?
Arts and Culture Commission.
It is, you're just plain gold, you just say it.
Yeah.
Okay. Have there been any events or anything that you've done this past year? I know with COVID, it made it difficult, of course, but as far as artwork or anything like that.
No, and a large part of that is, I think Kelly talked about, artists just weren't ready to really do anything, and for us to have a public forum in order to gather people just wasn't something to do. And really, if you go back to the documents and the strategic plan, what we really want to do is tie together events that individual art components or art performers are already doing and really building upon that. So it's drawing those connections together. So without, again, without a budget, it's going to be hard to produce our own events. What we want to do is use events that are currently happening and bringing those together and building those up and making them bigger and bringing attendance up.
And as Councilmember Elrod said, I know you're all biting at the bit to get going, and you guys are, I wish all of our boards and commissions could be as aggressive as you guys are trying to get things going. I do have a statement and then a question, maybe. I know, Kelly, you had mentioned that possible fee for non-residents at the museum. Now, over the years, that question comes up about every other year. I've brought it up many times. Councilmember Milliman brought it up, and every year, we're told why there's too many challenges to do that. But now it sounds like, oh, all of a sudden, we can do that. I mean, the challenges have been everything from using volunteers to collect fees, Smithsonian requirements or limitations, and also relatively low income in the first place. So with that in mind, and also, I think the funds would go to a general, to the general fund, if I'm not mistaken. But also, with that in mind, though, does that mean the budget is also going to have paid staff that we're going to be adding now, as well as not just at the museum to collect fees, but also train staff to collect fees, but also dedicated city staff to work on the arts and commission?
Well, we're not quite prepared to make the presentation to you at this point in time, but we will during the budget process. But I think that what we've learned from COVID is there's a lot of things you thought you could or couldn't do prior to COVID, and it really kind of changed the world as far as trying to do things in a different way. So, you know, we don't believe that we'll be adding additional staff in order to collect an admission fee. We're not really worried as much about the cash controls because it probably wouldn't be cash. It would be pay-by-credit card. People could pay for it in advance. So, I mean, we're still working on it and fleshing that all out, but you'll hear about it when we do the budget process.
Okay. And again, I guess my concern there is that we heard so many times, year after year, why we can't charge fees, and all of a sudden, we're looking at it now as a possibility so we can help fund a piece of it. And again, as I recall, the possible revenue that would be received is so low, that's what we've been hearing over the years. So I'm concerned that we'd have to add staff.
Well, it's not going to-
And that's whether it's pre-COVID or not. It has nothing to do with COVID.
Yeah, it's not going to solve the city's budget problems. In fact, the amount of money that it would bring in is probably not going to be substantial about amount of money, but I think it's a value proposition. I think when I first got this job in November, one of the first things I did, I looked at 18 museums in the Denver metro area, and I researched every one of them. And these are all the museums that you know, and it's the big ones, and then it's the little ones like the Molly Brown Museum or the Buffalo Bill Museum. And every museum I looked at charged an admission fee, and a lot of them are at no cost to residents, but all of them charged some sort of a fee, and it's not going to be a huge fee. It would be something that would be very nominal, so a family of four from outside of Littleton would be able to easily afford it. I don't think it would be more than taking a family of four to McDonald's. But, you know, charging a fee for something that is of such high quality, you know, also reinforces, you know, the amount of value that this museum has. And Littleton residents have been subsidizing the cost of the museum for non-residents for a very long time, so it'll be Council's decision. It'll be entirely up to you, but we'll bring the proposal to you, and you can take a look.
We have Councilmember Elrod, then Fay. Your microphone, please.
Turned it off instead of turning it on. Going back to objective two, cultural and community programming, as a measure there, you have maintained higher-quality ratings for the library and museum. And when we think about cultural programming and, you know, some of those fundamental, you know, identifying it, right? So we have the library museum as a physical structure to identify kind of the hub of potentially where we would look at culture programming, but in everything that we are trying to do with the Arts and Culture Commission, it's not just about the city. There are so many partnerships and kind of support that we provide beyond just our physical city, wholly-owned physical assets and operating expenses, which are the library and museum. Where I'm going with this is I do believe that a good measure here should also include Town Hall Art Center and Hudson Gardens. Those two are, while they may be a nonprofit, or maybe some elements of Hudson Gardens may be for-profit as well, they are an icon in our city when we talk about culture and arts, and we as a city also have a very financial interest in them and support in them. So my recommendation or I ask you to consider adding a measure for those entities as well.
I'm very glad you brought that up because I was looking at the resident survey earlier this afternoon, and there's a list of maybe 25 or 30 different amenities in the community, and residents were asked to rate the quality of those amenities. The number-one amenity, which will make Chair Bratton very happy, is Hudson Gardens. Number two, which will also make Chair Bratton very happy, is the Carson Nature Center. Number three is the museum. Number four is the library. I believe the Buck Center might be number five, but Town Hall Art Center is number nine. So, yeah, we're very mindful of, you know, continuing to keep the quality of these facilities, not all of which are ours, but they're all important and they're all connected.
Maybe that's something that we can, you know, you don't have to answer that now, but maybe come back at a Phase Two of, you know, how this objective may expand to include other entities, and it may be over time as well. So I think that's important because it's, you know, we can't rely on just one or two to define that, and it really is much broader, and we want it to be kind of citywide and for, you know, the partners that we work with so closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fay, and then Pro Tem.
I find that I'm feeling embarrassed if citizens are listening to this because we've been going out to them and saying, "We don't have enough money," the city, "for building repairs."
Tyler, is there any way we can turn Carol up? Sorry, Carol.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for helping on that. We have been saying to the citizens through newspaper articles, council meetings, and the like, that the city is very short on money, and that means that the city won't be able to repair buildings or finance police cars or get computers. And so we need a tax increase, a sales tax increase, in order to fund those things, very important things. And we've been saying again and again, we do priority-based budgeting now, so what is priority gets funded, the rest doesn't. A consultant, Gabby, I didn't get that quite right, but made it really clear when we had her come into a study session, it might have been two years ago, with the previous council. And she was pretty clear eventually that the arts would not be expected to provide revenue. That's not what they do. At that very same meeting, the Town Hall Art Center people said they wanted the city to provide, I think it might, a couple million dollars to them for a brand-new building and renovation of the existing Town Arts Hall building. And when I asked them, "What are you planning to do for fundraising?" They said, "Well, we don't do that." They need the city to provide the money. Okay, and so now we're telling taxpayers that we need a tax increase, and at the same time, with this meeting, we're saying we're planning to spend, when I added up the list there, at least $2.6 million on the arts. We can figure, I don't know if we have numbers, but I'll bet less than half of the taxpayers actually make use of the arts or even value the arts. It doesn't hang together. Now, let me say again, we are saying the city doesn't have enough money for the necessities, building repairs, police vehicles, computers. We are going to need a tax increase. And by the way, we are going to give at least three, about $3 million to the arts. And we do priority-based, I don't see how the arts has priority over buildings and police vehicles. Even if you survey the citizens, do you value most police vehicles or Hudson Gardens? One or the other? I'll bet they would say police vehicles over Hudson Gardens. Our surveys aren't like-for-like. We're reminding me of a family that says they can't go to work because they don't have work clothes or school clothes or shoes, and by the way, we need some party dresses and some tuxedos. That's what this sounds like to me. Now, that's all.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, and then Driscoll.
Yeah, I suppose response to that might be merited. It seems to me that, from the beginning, the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission was meant to be a tool for the arts and also for economic development. I think it's pretty apparent and pretty supported by various data that investment in the arts is both intrinsically valuable and also helps a city's revenues, helps a city's business community, helps the city's sales tax base, and I think it's concept-proven in that regard. I think Kelly Nardi's stat from just earlier this evening is just one of many stats, one of many data that could be cited. People who attend a Town Hall Art Center show go to dinner in downtown. I don't think that it's beyond our citizens to recognize that the arts are both intrinsically valuable but also bring economic return on investment, and in any event, the issue is settled in a lot of ways. That was the concept. That's what council has supported from the beginning, and that's what council continues to support. So I simply disagree with Councilmember Fay. The point I wanted to make, though, was that, well, at the risk of being a little off the wall, I'd like to propose a subcommittee for the Arts and Culture Commission. That would be the subcommittee for a fun city, right? We've had Peter Kagayama come and talk to us about what makes cities lovable, right? Susan Thornton, when she interviewed for her commission seat, talked about, you know, "Why don't we paint the sewer covers?" Right? Why don't we paint the sewer covers? And I drive by Greg's building every day on my way home, and I look at the murals and I just go, weird, I love it, right? My neighbor turned an old Ford truck into a fountain, right, in his yard. These are the things that enhance quality of life, and I would love to have a little think tank within the Arts and Culture Commission, thinking about kite festivals and paying buskers to come down was another of Susan Thornton's ideas, and paying people to paint the sewer covers. And I think Councilmember Milliman talked about how fun it was and how therapeutic it was during COVID to put headphones on and dance in downtown. it was during COVID to put headphones on and dance in downtown. You know, those are the things that make a community lovable. I'd love to see people, people dedicated to thinking about it. So that's all.
Great. Thank you. I might add, too, those murals are great, and Mr. Renkey had a fight to keep those on his building because it, they weren't always welcomed by some of the city. So it's, but you're right, I think those murals do add to our city. Mr. Driscoll.
Yeah, Scott, great idea on the fun city part. Maybe we turn Next Gen onto that since that's more their call to action. And just really a request, two years ago, we asked, or we recommended a fire museum or mural or something like that to recognize our fire department. That was put on the back burner last year, and I'd asked that, whether it's the city or whether it's this commission here, to have that in mind when, when we're looking to add some art to the city. That's, that's a big one for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Elrod.
Thank you, Pat, for bringing that up. And that actually was with the Fine Arts Board, so that would be a task of the Fine Arts Board. But I think that is an excellent example of what Mike spoke to earlier about how important our history and our heritage is and how forms of art, whether it's a sculpture, a mural, music, et cetera, has, helps us to tell this, continue to tell the story of Littleton. And that's a very important defining character that we as Littleton can own, others cannot. So that's how we become unique and how we remain unique. So to that, I want to come back to the comments from Councilmember Fay and Mayor Pro Tem Malin. And, you know, going back to two years ago, there, there was a lot of information that was shared with us two years ago, and part of that information was in fact a very, very comprehensive study and analysis of the contribution of the arts, financial contribution of the arts for economic development. In fact, there is a whole segment, Creative Industries, which is part of the Office of Economic Development and International Trade for the State of Colorado. So obviously, this is something that at the state level, at many local levels, it has been proven over and over again how a, a community that is supportive of the arts, the arts, you know, payback in spades of what they contribute from visitors to, you know, spending their money in other locations and the things that maybe aren't as tangible. When you think of quality of life, quality of life, when, when you come to a community and you have that sense of place, you feel like you're somewhere special, you choose to stay there a little bit longer, you may choose to move there or live there, raise a family there. So there's so many of those things that maybe aren't measurable in, you know, in, in the short term, but definitely have a long-term impact and value. So I think that when we look at what we've talked about here is this is part of some of the foundational and I'll even call it basic elements that are expected in Littleton. And everyone will have, you know, we will have a strong police force. We, of course, need to maintain our buildings. And when even when we talk about our buildings, our libraries, our museums, our historic buildings, regardless of what they're used for, are our buildings. And so these, to me, are very much foundational and necessary for our city and our community.
Great, thank you. Council, anyone else? Looks like we're good on that. Oh, Councilmember Grove. Kelly, I know you're over there.
I liked your presentation. I think your strategic plan is very ambitious. There's a lot you're willing to do, and I will definitely coordinate with you. I love your idea about getting Next Gen, coming up with some ideas, so maybe you don't have to have the committee just kind of send them in a direction. One thing that keeps sticking in my mind is that there's no other board and commission that has a consultant. And I understand that it's, if we're going to do this, it would stress staff time to take over what the consultant is doing. It's just it's, it's unique. And so it kind of makes me think, you know, $42,000 for a consultant. But then the alternative is staff does it. So I don't know what the balance is on that, or maybe there's some funding that we get for that. It's just unique. Not that I'm not supporting it, it's just noticeable.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, let's, let's get to some direction here because I am going to support moving forward with this, but I am going to, when it comes budget time, when we sit down as a, as a group, I am going to look at priority based budgeting to see where are we on our buildings and things like that. And, and as Mayor Pro Tem Malin had mentioned, I think there are some things right now that our commission could be doing, and that is the Susan Thornton manhole covers. I think that would be great. Just get started on those things. That would be the start of something. With that, if, do you have anything else that you want to present to us?
No, Mr. Mayor and council, I think if you're okay, we would proceed with this as a goal, and then obviously we have the budget conversation this fall.
Right. Council, I'm just looking for a consensus. Do we have anybody opposed? I see no one opposed. So with that, yeah, move forward with the planning.
Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming in, Kate and Michael. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right, cool. Council, did you want to take five? Council, we're going to take five. It is now just about 7:45. Let's come back at 7:55.
Thank you. Good job, Mike.
I'm opening back up. It is 7:53. Yep, next item on our agenda is ID number 21-070, Financial Update. And we got a little bit of a feedback there. So Council, Council, we're going to receive from the city financial director, an update on some plans that they have, including the use of some of the funds for the American Rescue Plan funds. So we are, let's see, so Council, we will be given some, given direction to staff regarding the use of the American Rescue Act funds, as whether or not we agree they do or do not use those funds as they're proposing. So this is really for information only, Council. We're not going to give directions. I, I, I'm correcting myself. We're not going to give any direction unless there is an objection to what you have proposed to us. So we are not giving direction. All right, with that, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm going to turn it over quickly to Tiffany Hooton, our Finance Director, but just maybe a little background here. So as we struggled with COVID here in 2020, one of the things that we obviously had to do was make some significant cuts here to get us to a budget, a balanced budget. We had always hoped at this moment in time here in 2021, in the spring, that we'd have enough information and that we'd be having a fairly robust recovery. And the hope was again to, for Council, have an opportunity to kind of add some services back into the budget here for 2021. Well, we're not quite there. Tiffany will get into some of the detail, even though the report that we shared here Friday actually was the, one of the better reports we've seen in a long time. Got to be honest. So I think we're right on the edge of getting some good information and the recovery, I think, is starting, is my view. And I'm going to talk a little bit here, even a little later here, about when we get into legislative rules and where are we at with COVID-19 and maybe getting back to in-person meetings. A lot of information was shared here with the Governor here today about the dial and where some of the metro health departments have kind of coordinated here for a new approach, but we'll get into that a little later. So it's all kind of connected here and there is a request here for Council to consider. Would appreciate a little feedback. It's kind of the mayor alluded to here. I am looking for the use of the federal stimulus, ARPA, I guess for short, to look at a stopgap measure here for both the library and museum to get them at an 80% level. So back here last year, those two facilities took a pretty big, pretty big hit during the budget process. And so just as a temporary measure here to get us through to the balance of the year, and we can certainly talk some of the detail, I am looking for Council reaction to use that federal stimulus. So with that, Tiffany, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. And this evening, we're going to be giving you a financial update. We're going to be looking at how we ended for 2020, where we're kind of looking for 2021. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the ARPA money and I, I've kind of coined it as ARPA. I don't know what other people are calling it, but it's just easier to say ARPA. So when I say that, that's what I'm referring to. And then we'll just have a little bit of a conclusion and kind of tell you where we're headed. So the agenda, we'll talk about the general fund, where we ended 2020. We also updated the five-year financial plan related to the general fund. And then the same with the Capital Projects Fund, where we ended in 2020, and an updated five-year financial plan. I mentioned ARPA and then a conclusion. A little bit of history on the general fund and COVID. So if you recall, back in May of 2020, staff presented and worked vigorously on trying to understand the impact of COVID and the loss of revenues to the city. And with that, we presented three scenarios in May of 2020 of where we thought we might be going related to COVID reductions. You'll see we had scenarios A, B, and C. I coined them as best case, probably what's going to happen, and then worst case. And as you can see, the best case was scenario A. And where we actually ended was even better than our scenario A. Our reduction estimate was 11% with about a $5 million reduction. And we actually ended about 9% down with about a $4 million reduction. So I think all in all, we did much better than anticipated. I think the, the idea is that it's still a loss nonetheless, and so we still have to address that going forward. Mark mentioned some of the measures that we took during 2020 at the onset of COVID. We wanted to be strategic in some changes that we made with our 2020 budget. We didn't want to overreact, but we also didn't want to underreact. And so we met numerous times as leadership team, as a number of people in the organization to kind of identify, what are some of the things that we can either postpone, some things that we need to reduce, other things we might need to look at? So during the year, we did reduce our 2020 budget by about $2.1 million in a number of areas, the ones listed here before you. The largest one was the Early Retirement Incentive Program. This did impact the entire organization in some form or fashion. And I believe we had about 15 employees who took advantage of that program. And the idea was that we were going to be saving money in the long term. So we were going to offer this early retirement. Employees were going to take advantage of that. And then we were going to not rehire or replace some of those positions. Now with operations and needs throughout the organization, we did have, have to replace some of those, but it definitely was a financial positive impact to the city. This is probably one of my favorite slides, maybe one of your least favorite, just because there's a lot of numbers on here and percentages, but I think it's important. I have the next two slides that are comparing two different things for the general fund. One is we're comparing it to 2019, so 2019 was pre-COVID. And then the next slide, we're going to be comparing to our 2020 budget, our original budget, where we originally thought we were going to be. So when you compare to 2019, it's clear that our revenues were less than 2019 by about 8%. The largest loss percentage-wise was in fines. And that is essentially because with COVID, there were a lot of people no longer on the road and that impacted our police fines and also library-museum fines. The other thing, the other reduction was charges and services. So things that we were charging for prior to COVID, we no longer did, and so we saw a loss there. And then the largest one, of course, is sales and use tax. It's the majority of the revenue to the city, and so we were down about 7% compared to 2019. On the expenditure side, in total, our expenditures were down 3%. I think the one thing that I do want to remind everyone is this does not include changes related to the fire merger. So I'm not comparing any expenditures related to the fire and I'm not comparing the property tax reduction. And I think I, I wanted to do that to just kind of give you an apples-to-apples look of that.
So on that, so I understand the fire on the expenditure side. So help me understand the math or what we're comparing on the property tax side when you're saying. So if property tax was six points.
And the mills went down, yes. Property taxes were 6.662. They went down to two mills. And so the percentage you're seeing there is the differential based on assessed values. So at the 2.0 rate. Does that make sense? I wanted to take out the differential between the 6.662 and the two mills because that was related to the fire reduction.
Said another way, if mill levy remained the same, prop, so if mill levy remained the same, property tax went up, property tax revenues went up 15%.
Yes. So when we're looking at 2020 and how we ended, we want to look at the fund balance and we ended at about $14.3 million. That is a reduction from 2019 of about 1.5. The other thing is, I do want to caveat these that, these are unaudited numbers. We're right in the midst of our audit for the city of Littleton and so this may change slightly. I don't anticipate any large swings or large changes, but this will at least give you an idea of where we ended in 2020. So then the next slide we have is where we're, I'm comparing to our budget. So when we came into 2020, we had already prepared a budget in fall of 2019 and COVID hit. And so I wanted to compare where we ended versus where we anticipated or planned for us to end originally. So again, sales and use tax was down 8%, property tax was up 4%. And again, that's just based on assessed values.
Tiffany, I have a question on that.
Yes.
When, when you say sales and use tax were down, but when I look at the retail, retail sales tax revenue, it's up.
Exactly.
And so you're, you're combining that with the general use tax, which is down.
Yes.
But the retail tax went up by quite a bit.
Yes, that's correct.
How's it going down?
Use tax went down quite a bit and so it was, use tax was down more than retail sales tax was up.
Well, according to the report, it's only down by 28,000 from last year.
Are you?
I'm looking at year-to-date.
For, I'm sorry, for March?
Year-to-date, so yeah, the year-to-date through March.
Right, this is, this is the full year of 2020.
Okay. So this is, so the year-to-date that you're giving us isn't?
Yeah, that's for 2021.
Got it. Okay, never mind.
Sorry. Okay, again, charges for services were down 46%, fines were down 57%, and in total, we were down 9% compared to our budget. On the expenditure side, personnel was down 4%, non-personnel was down 28%. Non-personnel is an area where we did, did the majority of the reductions in 2020 of the 2.1 million. And then in total, our expenditures were down 10%. I also did note that we had the $3.1 million transfer and we did not make an adjustment to that dollar amount for 2020 as a result of COVID. We kept it the same.
I'm sorry, one more question. So when you're, is it, total expenditure is down 10% from the budget or 10% from the previous year?
So on this one, it's 10% from the budget.
Okay. What is it from the previous year?
So from the previous year, it was down 3%.
3%, okay. Thank you.
So this is just a graph to kind of show you the fund balance for the general fund over the last five years. You can see we went up a little bit in 2018. Sales tax was doing pretty well, I will say, up until 2018. And 2019, we dipped down a little bit, but then in 2020 is when COVID hit. So we certainly saw a decline in our fund balance. This graph here just kind of shows you where we projected we would be for sales and use tax for 2020. That's the gray bar. And then the blue in the forefront is where we actually ended. So you can see we were down pretty significantly month over month. So also, we wanted to update our five-year financial plan. So this is the revised five-year financial plan. Some of the changes that we did have to make is for 2021, when you look at our sales and use tax report through March, you can see that in total, for the general fund, we're down about a quarter of a million dollars from where we anticipated we would be. So we want to make sure that we account for that reduction. We are hoping that in, you know, May, June, July, we're going to see a lot of that come back so that we can recover some of that. That's based on the budget, where we anticipated we would be through March of 2021. Is that your question?
No, sorry, Tiffany. Can you remind me what our reserves policy is?
Sure. So our reserve policy is that we're between 8 and 18% in the fifth year. And according to our five-year plan, we are at 8%.
So 2026, we're going to be out of policy?
Potentially.
Yeah, you're right, exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. And a reminder, financial plan is a point in time. There's a lot of factors. There's a lot of things that can change, go up, go down between now and then. But certainly, 2026, we would potentially be less than 8%. A couple of other changes.
May I just, can, can you just remind us what's in other revenue? Oh, damn.
That's cute. Let me think. Give me, give me a second and I'll, I'll, I'll try to remember exactly what's in there. It's a culmination of everything else. Does that help? No, probably not. Let me think of some of the larger things that are in there and I'll, and I'll get back to that.
And, and Council, there was an item on there. It was a transportation warehouse and it is actually for Uber-type?
So there are delivery companies that are, that are included in that category.
Is that a new category that you have?
It's not a new category, but they are new sales tax remitters.
Yeah, because the previous year, it was like almost zero.
Exactly.
And this year, it's like 100 and some odd.
Yeah, I think that is a, a clear reflection of COVID and the change in how restaurants are being delivered. Other miscellaneous. I need my sidekick here to help me so she can look up things. I'm looking at Kelly. Kelly, can you help? No, okay. Grants would be in there. Payments from Lyft are in there. No, that would be under sales and use tax. It's, it's culmination of a number of miscellaneous items that I can't think of off the top of my head right now, but I can follow up with you certainly on that. Oh, some other changes that we made to the five-year plan. So in assessing, in assessing where we ended in 2020 and then accounting for our encumbrances that we carried over, that were approved the last meeting, we did have to make some adjustments. And one other one in particular is related to market, market for employees. You know, historically, we've put 3% in the out years and, you know, just based on where we've been, where we're headed and what we've been seeing the last three years under this, we did have to increase that a little bit. And we also think that's going to affect our health insurance. We anticipate some of our health insurance maybe going up in the next few years. So we did make some adjustments related to that. Some of the other ones were the two positions that were approved, the budget amendment, the last meeting, related to economic development and the library, museum, and communications department have been included in that as well. So those are some of the minor adjustments that have been made.
If I may, Council, just, so I suppose the good news is that in the five-year, it meets the policy, specifically the fifth year. The bad news is the trend is still the same. And I think that's perhaps a little more alarming here. So if you look at that, you know, 24%, 21, 17, it's clearly going in a, in a direction that we just got to reverse here. We got to flatten that out.
Councilmember Fay, if you have any questions, just go ahead and just automatically just throw it in there.
All right, so we took a quick glance of the general fund and so we just have some items we want to just summarize with you. You know, we hoped that we'd be able to come back looking at our revenues on the recovery of COVID. We hope we would be able to come back and ask for some additional adjustments to the 2021 budget. We're just not there yet. I think it's still too soon to make any permanent changes. So we're going to hold tight and we're going to keep watching the revenues for at least the three, next three months. And then we will probably be discussing something during the 2022 budget preparations.
Are you saying amendments to reduce the expenses?
Probably the opposite.
That's not what I was hoping for.
Understood, understood. We do have one item that we are requesting Council consider doing for 2021 and that's to bring the majority of our employees to market. You know, we've really struggled. We weren't able to give increases last year in 2020. We plan to do some of this in 2022 and 2023. We feel we are at least in a comfortable place where we'd like to address some of these issues in 2021. And so that is one thing that we are talking with Council and asking for your support on. I mentioned, or, well, we may have some additional one-time additions throughout the remainder of 2021 that we might bring forward, but we're not looking at adding any long-term additions at this time. I mentioned that we updated our five-year plan. And as Mark mentioned earlier, you know, we're still grappling with a declining fund balance. And that's the ultimate concern in the future years and how do we address that?
And that's got to be a priority, obviously. I mean, if 8% is our minimum and we're objected to be there in five years.
Highest priority.
Yeah. And then I mentioned the 2022 budget process. You know, we're hoping that's going to give us the ability to maybe address some additional 2021 needs, but then certainly identifying what we need for the 2022 budget and going forward. Any questions on the general fund? If not, I'll jump to the Capital Projects Fund. All right, similar thing for Capital Projects Fund. I have two slides that are going to compare the 2020 Capital Projects Fund on how we ended compared to 2019 and then also how we ended compared to 2020. I think the story is the same as the general fund. We've seen a loss of revenues. Building use tax, definitely a decrease in that. You know, a lot of construction projects were put on hold. People weren't pulling permits, so we're not getting in those building use taxes. Additionally, HUTF, we knew early on, less people driving on the roads, less gas tax, that means less share back to the city of Littleton. And so in total, we lost about $891,000 in the Capital Projects Fund in 2020.
Tiffany, use tax, whenever, I've, I've talked to many contractors lately. They're all busier than can be. So how is it that we're not getting revenue from that?
Either they've already pulled their permit or maybe they're busy in other jurisdictions. We just haven't seen such an increase this year. On the expenditure side, we would.
You're not giving me the answers I want.
I, I understand. They're not the answers I want to give you. There may be a ray of, one ray of sunshine for Capital Projects Funds. We'll get to you. So again, on the expenditure side, we were down compared to 2019, about $1 million. And again, I think that's just a reflection of COVID and a lot of projects in Littleton were put on hold as well. So there were some construction projects we weren't able to get to, street-related and things of that nature. Any of those projects that weren't completed, we did carry over in the encumbrance. So we accounted for that in 2021 and anticipate spending that. And again, the transfer in of 3.1 million. At the end of the day, ending fund balance is about 6.9. This is down about 1.1 from 2019. Compared to the 2020 budget, similar, we were down 309,000 use tax, HUTF 150, total revenues down about 300. And again, our expenditures were down 1.3 compared to our budget. So I said one ray of sunshine for the Capital Projects Fund. So in reviewing the five-year plan, there were several things that we were able to adjust in our five-year plan. We did end 2020 better than anticipated. We did have a net savings of about $450,000. So that's a net savings that we can spread over the next five years on different projects. And then we also had an adjustment to our transfer in to the general fund. So that was about another $375,000 that we could allocate to future projects as well. So some of the things that we changed. Some of the things that we changed is we tried to establish a grant match of about $300,000 a couple of years ago to kind of help counter some of our deficits and grant matches for federal projects. And so we did increase that to $500,000. The other thing we increased is we were able to increase ADA. Remember, we reduced this in the 2020 budget because of lack of funding. We do, we are able to increase that to 50,000, or from 50 to 100,000 over the next five years. Building maintenance, that is a huge deficit that we have every year. We don't have enough money to pay to repair buildings, replace, maintain them. And so we were able to add an additional $75,000 each year. And then for police and information technology, we added some inflation factors and tried to get them back to where they were prior. I think one key point in the five-year plan related to the Capital Projects Fund is that, again, in the fifth year, we are essentially below zero in our fund balance. So we're going to have to make some adjustments over the next five years to address that. So able to add back a little bit, but still nowhere near our need. And in the end of the fifth year, we are still below zero.
I have a question. So where did the able-to-add-back come from? So was it some of the contracting, you know, the, the looking at how we are contracting and maybe gaining some synergies there? Or was it simply some projects came in under budget? So what are some of the ways that we got that savings?
Yeah, I think in looking at it, there were some projects that weren't completed or we didn't spend as much as we had anticipated just due to COVID and they, we did not carry those over into the next year. And then I think there are some projects that were under budget, but I could certainly clarify that. Um, and then I think there are some projects that were under budget. Um, but I could certainly clarify that. Um, the majority of that is uh, likely in public works. Um, so I can certainly check with Keith on that. But I think there were several things that we just did not get to or we weren't able to complete um, that we did not uh, carry over into 2021. Any particular projects or questions on capital projects fund?
Can I ask a question? Um, you know, as we um, move as as a society, as we as we move more um, towards um, electric vehicles. Um, I know this is probably being taken into account. Um, so I, there's um, a bunch of companies that are releasing electric trucks this fall. I think Reed is probably purchasing one himself. From what I understand, I would like to do as well. But um, what is, what, I I know this is a small um, portion of the budget or could be a small portion of the budget, but with electronic vehicles charging stations, does the city get any kind of um, uh, monetary funds back from that when people use those charging stations? Um, as the highway use tax fund goes down because there's less gas, there will still be gas cars on the, on the road. I know that for a long time. But I mean, GM's going completely electric by what, 2030? Like, that's right around the corner. So as those tax funds go down, or like, you know, what's the funding mechanisms for electronic vehicles that the city has? Um, I just heard on NPR that um, Rivian, 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 oh my God, I want one of those trucks, but they're way out of my budget. But they're donating uh, a bunch of um, charging stations to the city of Salida, I believe. Um, so I don't know if that's um, something others, um, we're not necessarily destination like Salida is for rafting and whatever, but um, I guess, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to ask, like, how do we capture that market um, as it's emerging? I don't want to be left behind because we think we're still tied to fossil fuels for the next, you know, whatever.
We are going to touch on this subject a little bit here when we talk about the council's goal around environmental stewardship. So Public Works has been pursuing, you know, some level of improvement around electric vehicles and charging stations specifically for city facilities. In fact, I think I shared an email recently about a grant uh, we uh, were awarded here. Um, I think in my opinion, the bigger issue is just about the highway user tax fund. There's all sorts of conversation going on at the federal level now about once again, trying to take that issue on. Remember, it hasn't changed since the Reagan administration. I mean, and that's how entrenched this thing is. So this is a very difficult federal conversation, but there is a recognition that electric vehicles are just going to have to pay some share of their impact to the infrastructure. And so where that plays out, it's hard to say, but that is likely where our city and every city in the country is likely to see a different revenue source. That's what I'm hoping for. I think we all are. Uh, we can't keep the current highway user tax formula. It's just, it's not going to solve the problems here in the infrastructure in this country.
All right, now we're going to get to the positive part of the evening, the American Recovery Plan. Did I, did I do that right? Recovery? I keep forgetting, ARPA. So ARPA is the act that was passed on March 11th. This is providing funding to all nineteen thousand municipalities. This is an area that was lacking in the CARES Fund that was given out in 2020. And so the feds came back and um, acknowledged that municipalities needed um, some additional help as well and included us in that. Um, we're going to be getting a distribution from the state. We expect the first half to be approximately uh, June of 2021 and a second half, June of 2022. Um, we have a little more time to spend these funds. We have until December thirty first, 2024, uh, rather than nine months as the CARES Act um, provided. Um, I think the one key thing that is this very similar to the CARES Act is we are still um, at the mercy of the US Treasury and providing clarification on how we can use those funds. Um, similar to CARES Act, they provided um, some guidelines, um, but we are vigorously waiting for additional clarification from them on an, in a number of areas. Uh, we will also be required to report to the US Treasury on how we do spend, spend those funds. Um, so use of funds, uh, we have four areas. Uh, one is to respond to the public health emergency with respect, respect to the coronavirus, um, negative impacts, assistance to households, small businesses. Um, um, so this one is very similar to the CARES Act. This, this area is no more restrictive than CARES Act. So when we were uh, identifying things to spend on CARES Act, this is, this section is very similar to that. Um, the second one is to respond to workers um, who are providing essential work during COVID and providing them premium pay to some of these eligible workers. Um, there's still some clarification needed on who is eligible, who are those workers? Um, the third area is the provision of government serviced, services to the extent of a reduction in revenue. And this is the one that we are hoping will provide us the most flexibility. Um, initially, absolutely help uh, give back to the city lost revenues based on a formula. Um, so again, this one will give us the most flexibility we felt. And then the last one is investments in water, sewer and broadband. And this is the one that has the least um, information on. And so we are definitely waiting for more information from the treasury on this. So what does this mean to Littleton? Uh, we'll get about five point one in June of 2021, five point one in June of 2022. Uh, initially, we do anticipate some immediate needs and uh, there's a informational attachment in your council communication. Uh, we'd like to add back some personnel uh, to the library and museum. Uh, a number of those employees were furloughed, furloughed or took advantage of the E R I. And so we'd like to bring them back to eighty percent uh, of capacity of where they were um, prior to COVID. Um, and then we also have some internal needs for contract personnel, um, namely to help manage the grants. Uh, ten million dollars is a lot of uh, money to have to manage internally um, from an accounting and grant perspective. Um, and then we also have some needs in other departments in that organization.
And we have one grant writer that we added last year, was it?
We do, and she was very new prior to COVID and then got inundated with CARES Act. And that essentially took up the majority of her time the last half of the year in managing that. Um, so we definitely need some help in that area. Um, we're gonna do a similar um, form that we use for CARES Act. Uh, we've already started internal discussions to develop a use of funds. Um, we're hoping to uh, provide categories for use of those funds. And then essentially, we're going to align it with the budget process and P B B. Uh, we want to make sure that we're strategic and thoughtful in how we spend these funds and uh, prioritize those. Um, and uh, take a little bit of time. We didn't have much time with CARES, so we want to be um, very strategic in that. I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to um, kind of touch on the library and museum. We have a number of people here.
There was an attachment to the communication here that tried to highlight here, you know, some of the issues and requests here specifically for the library and museum. It is a stopgap. It's only for this year. We would use the ARPA money for this purpose. So we're not looking to permanently bring back the personnel at this point. We'd have to play out the discussion um, here during the budget process about, you know, the services and programs at the library and museum and make some decisions at that point about what that future looks like. Uh, this is just to get us through the year. Uh, they did take a pretty serious hit, you know, as I said before. And um, I'm, I'm recommending that we take this step in order just to get us to this point. Much like the rest of the organization, you know, it's not just the library and museum. We're once again, have to use priority based budgeting just to look at all the departments to make sure that we're trying to line this up the best we can. Uh, the, the ARPA money is, is a blessing at one level, but it's only um, for, you know, very specific purposes. It doesn't fund ongoing issues here. So we've got to be very careful about how we spend that money. It doesn't solve the ongoing financial problem that where Tiffany was just sharing here in both the capital project fund and the general fund. So we'll have to talk through how we might use this to, you know, to kind of take care of some of these issues, but again, it's just one time money. So any kind of feedback, uh, mayor and council would be appreciated on the request here for the library and museum.
So what I just heard then is, is the funds that you have available to bring back folks is, is just temporary then? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. I did want to remind everyone of our budget schedule. Um, so we will start in June, uh, providing information to the departments, uh, together, the request for 2022. We'll be coming forward to council in early September um, to have some discussions related to the 2022 budget with final adoption in November and December. So I just wanted to kind of remind everyone what that process looks like through the summer and through the fall. So in conclusion, the general fund revenues for 2020 were better than we had originally anticipated, which is good news. I think um, the road to recovery might take a little longer than anticipated. Hopefully, we'll start seeing some upticks in May, June, July. Um, I think the city was very proactive in identifying issue, the issue and making adjustments along the way. Um, again, we wanted to be thoughtful and strategic and didn't want to over, I don't know, didn't want to make any drastic reductions or changes prior to understanding what we, the revenues were looking like. Um, ARPA funds are definitely going to help in the interim, but they're certainly not the answer to the long time, long term financial challenges that we face today and will continue to face. And then the last one was my chance of a little bit of humor, but I think the 2022 budget discussions are going to be very interesting this year.
It worked. We all laughed.
You're no read, let's face it.
Can I ask a question? Maybe she'll give me a different answer than she gives you.
Give it a shot.
Um, I actually just have more of a comment. Um, so going back to the ARPA funds and the use of funds, a few things that um, kind of jump out at me is um, item D where it's water sewer infrastructure. Um, so I did hear you that that's pretty vague. Um, but given our discussions in our capital projects um, funds and if we were to do these types of things, it would likely come out of capital, um, the capital budget. So, you know, I, I think that would be um, a good way to alleviate some of that pressure that we have in the capital budget if some of those projects are related and would qualify under this scenario D. So hopefully, you know, just slightly alleviate some of that pressure. Um, and then item A where it talks about impacted, significantly impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. I mean, to me, that goes, you know, hand in hand and aligned with what we talked about earlier where we're trying to build up and um, develop that industry. So we're, we're pulling, you know, we're pulling them out of the ashes. So any additional support that we can do that in conjunction because it would be a shame to make an investment and then have some of these industries completely fail. Um, and then we kind of lose what our, our goal, vision and strategy is for the city. So those are two, not that any of the others aren't, of course, we, we can find things to do with all of these, but those are just two that really stand out to me of um, uh, from a timing um, perspective and where our focus is, it's very aligned to um, what we are trying to solve for as a city and a community.
All right, and that is the end of the presentation for this evening.
Conversation killer there, Tiffany.
I always am. You're welcome.
I, I guess the good news is, is uh, the city manager didn't have to deliver this news.
I was tired of giving bad news. So, thank you, Tiffany.
Well, uh, we have no direction to give on this. That was just uh, for information only unless there was any objections to anything. And, oh, Councilmember Fay has something there.
I, I, I have a comment. If, if we take, if we take out of the discussion, the, the good news, the um, the short term federal funding that it's been made very clear that that is short term, it's not a solution to our budget problem. But of what uh, we heard tonight, we were sounding kind of schizophrenic, all, all put together. We're saying we have a budget shortfall of about the same amount that we want to spend on arts and culture, at which doubles then the budget shortfall. So if we're roughly two, two million plus short, and then we add on to that two point six million for the arts, that makes a short five plus million, four plus million. Um, that, that doesn't make sense to me to be talking about spending money that's not in the budget when we're already saying that the budget is very, very short. And that's all I have.
Great. Anyone else? I see no one else. Uh, Mayor Protem.
Is, is now the time, uh, city manager to give direction on staffing for the library and museum?
I would appreciate some feedback. Thank you.
I'm fully in support of doing that.
Yeah, and, and it's temporary too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but absolutely.
I think
Is there any opposed to, anybody opposed to it? Yeah, I see no one opposed to it. So yeah, good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anything else? All right, then we are through with this item. Did anybody need to take five? No, let's, let's keep moving. All right. Thank you, Tiff. Appreciate it. It's, it's always good to not hear from Tim, by the way. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Nancy. Kelly, all right. Okay, council, we'll move down to our third item. We'll try to get through this one as quick as possible. So it is ID number twenty one dash zero six four, council's legislative rules. And council, we are going to discuss and provide direction to staff on possible changes to our, our legislative rules. Uh, let's see. Kind of just set it up a little bit. Is currently council and, and all boards and commissions are using virtual meetings to conduct business as allowed by our public emergency process that we put together on March twenty of twenty twenty. Uh, council is now using a hybrid form of Zoom and council chamber or in person meeting. Uh, the intent is to continue the hybrid form of the meetings for council as well as uh, the boards and commission at least, at least until June. And but, but about the second or third week of May, I think council or staff, you're going to come to us with a, a possible proposal on how we should move forward uh, at, at about that time. Um, so I think that's it. I'll just turn it over to city manager. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, mayor. And yeah, I think maybe just to get to the point here, I think uh, if you watch the news today, our governor just kind of gave a briefing on where the health orders are at at the state level. Excuse me. And um, also an article here about our health departments here in the urban area, Denver metro area uh, have been coordinating a new approach to kind of a dial. And so um, our city attorney here, Reed, might have to help back me up here on some details if council's got some questions. But the short version of that is by the middle of May, it looks like the state restrictions are just going to be dramatically reduced and turned over here to locals and we're going to have a new color, as I read in the article, the color of clear. And so after May fifteenth or something, it's going to be the clear color. And but there's likely to be some requirements like wearing masks inside a restaurant as you move to your seat, you know, kind of the standards we have today, but basically open to full capacity. So all that to say is that from this point until this meeting that we have now scheduled here towards the end of May, uh, where staff will come back and talk about a transition plan for basically our buildings and all of our boards and commissions. I'd say we just keep the status quo. We keep the hybrid meetings. Um, and then we just have a conversation here at the end of May to see what's next and let the, the health departments here in the metro area kind of fine tune this clear color approach. Well, I probably wouldn't have picked Claire, but um, that's what we got.
Can a, a border commission, if it's unanimous, decide to come back in person? Like I'm thinking of Next Gen, all fifteen of them wanted to come back.
Absolutely. Yeah, in fact, we have some boards and commissions are kind of stepping in that now. We've been working with the chairs and the boards to try to figure that out. So certainly between now and the, say, the first of June, if a board wants to do that, we can. Uh, we have the health order allows that, but obviously we have the social distancing and things like that to take care of. We now have a room to pull that off. We don't have to do it necessarily in this room, but it's so the short answer is yes, we can do that.
And it, it can be hybrid, like if one or two people couldn't come?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right.
Just real quick, Jerry.
Oh, go ahead.
That sounds good to me. I was just going to ask a bit of a random question, but sort of related. Are we going to be able to do study sessions off the dais at any point?
To end that, in other words, to have a
Yeah, to do them, Mike, we used to do them.
Community room type thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, Tyler, we'll have to work with the man behind the curtain, Tyler here, to kind of figure out exactly the, the camera situation there. But that is the goal clearly, is to get off the dais and onto the floor. And so we'll have to, I don't have the, that's what we'll talk about at the end of May, but that's, that's where we're wanting to go.
Good, good. That'll be good.
Yeah.
All right. So good. We'll like to hear from you in a few weeks.
Yeah. And, and there's a lot to discuss here at the end of May. It's not only just obviously, you know, the status of the health orders, but it's the remodel project. Council asked for an update on kind of where we're at contractually and what the scope of the work. There's also lessons learned that we're trying to wrap up here internally as staff, just how workspace may be used differently, the remote working, kind of our view of what that means. And again, there's all sorts of articles that I'm sure all of us are reading about that, but we're trying to bring some conclusion here as the leadership team. And we'll share that with you here at the end of May.
All right. Anything else?
Oh.
Any report?
I do have a report, so, if I may, Mayor. And I, I think I just wanted to comment here with the, I sent an email here last week, just updating the tentative calendar for council, and just want to make sure that you had an opportunity to kind of look at that. Some of you have already shared with me some other questions and maybe some other opportunities here that we need to plug in. But in, in the end, what we're trying to do at the staff level is try to look forward to the balance of the year, and you have a heavy agenda. And so we're looking at everything from discussions around ADUs to STRs, accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals, sorry for the public, I don't want to use acronyms here. But, you know, we got to make sure that we plan plenty of time, multiple meetings to cover at least those two topics, we know that. And then we have a series of ordinances that we got to come back to council that you've already passed. The noise ordinance is one, it sunsets November 1st, so staff is, you know, collecting data and information, bring that back. You can make an assessment for the noise downtown. We also have the gun storage regulation. So if you remember that way we left it, council asked that staff engage those who are required for the storage, kind of work through that ordinance to see what compliance looks like. We know we have one business that has kind of a unique model here on what they sell. And so we're trying to figure out what's practical. So we're going to come back to you with a presentation around that. And if there's a modification, then staff will recommend that. But the goal's still the same, is to try to come up with some safe methodology to, to store all that. So I'm sharing this with you. Please look at the tentative calendar, and if you've got some questions about that, let us know. We're trying to plug in, and you look at it carefully, because you're going to see a lot of stuff fill in that calendar.
If I could add to that, and I know the Mayor Protem too, has seen the red lines that he, or changes that you've already made in the schedule. And I know some of you already have vacations already scheduled. But going forward, we're not going to have Zoom available. So, you know, make sure you look at the calendar. If you, if you're going to miss a meeting, you're just going to miss a meeting. That's all there is to it. So Zoom won't be available going forward at some point.
At some point. We'll have that conversation at the end of May is my suggestion.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, city attorney.
Just briefly, so I've been keeping track of this opioid settlement negotiations that have been going on. As you may be aware, the city of Littleton is a participant in a class action lawsuit against a number of pharmaceutical companies and distributors as it relates to opioids. So, you know, just kind of on a national level, the settlement is kind of closing in a little bit. And going forward, one of the directions that council will have to give is if the city receives monies, which we would be scheduled to get, how best to use those. In speaking with the county and some of the other local jurisdictions, one of the thoughts is kind of having a regional kind of council, so to speak, to try to put forward kind of best efforts, best plans, best practices in terms of how the monies that the counties in the various jurisdictions could put that to, and get kind of the best use for that. So going forward, as this gets closer, that will be a discussion that this council will have to make and give direction as to what makes sense in terms of how this money should be used. Should it just be given back to the county to make more sense for the programs that they may have? So that's my update. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. And, and with the medical stuff in mind, are, we're still using the Buck Center, we, the city staff, still use the Buck Center for minor medical stuff?
We do. The, the COVID restrictions have cut us way back. I don't remember the exact status of availability. We were also hoping to have COVID shots come out of our, out of our clinic, but they haven't received the refrigerator necessary to do that.
Okay.
But the, yes, the mayor, the short answer is yes, we, we have a clinic still supposed to be in operation here for
And, and the plan to bring staff back into the building is going to be part of the May presentation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already started to make a transition, to be honest, but we'll talk in details about what that looks like at the end of May.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anything else? I see nothing. It is 8:44, and we are adjourned. Thank you.